All right, it is four o'clock and we will start the weekly meeting of the Salina City Commission for April 8th. I'll call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the week of April 8th through 12th, 2019, is National Work Zone Awareness Week in the city of Salina. Anthony Brockway, Engineering Tech 2, will read the proclamation.
Proclamation of the city of Salina, Kansas. Whereas construction work and repairs to our roads must be done with traffic on them, putting both motorists and workers at risk every day, and whereas workers diligently continue to improve, rebuild, and maintain roadways so motorists can safely and efficiently travel throughout Salina, and whereas in Kansas during 2018, five people were killed and 398 people were injured in work zone-related crashes, and whereas nearly 90 percent of the people injured or killed in work zone crashes each year are motorists, making work zone safety important to all citizens, and whereas 69 percent of these fatalities and injuries were caused by inattentive driving, following too closely, and speeding in construction zones, and whereas to reduce fatalities and injuries, motorists must remember to set aside distractions, be extra cautious, and give work zones their undivided attention when traveling, and whereas safety on the roads is a shared responsibility and we must all do our part to keep roadway safe, and whereas the city of Salina is dedicated to enhancing work zone safety for both road workers and motorists. Now therefore, I, Dr. Trent W. Davis, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of April 8th through 12th, 2019, as National Work Zone Awareness Week in the city of Salina, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in work zone safety and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life while working under these adverse conditions. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this 8th day of April, 2019. Trent W. Davis, MD, Mayor.
Thank you. I was actually rather surprised to see that most of the fatalities were the motorists. So, not sure how you protect yourselves from the crazy ones that was driving through. Are there any special, either activities for this month or any special procedures that you do on the workplace to slow people down?
We do not locally, however, KDOT is placing orange lights in a number of areas throughout the state, including all district offices, which would include the one here in Salina. They're placing them on Amelia Earhart Bridge in Atchison and a number of other places to help raise awareness of this week.
So how are we doing as a city downtown?
We are making progress. We are making progress.
I mean, we're not scaring the workers away, I hope?
No.
All right. If you come forward, I'll give you a signed copy of the proclamation. Keep your eyes open. These are very bright, which I guess is the purpose. But, I guess, put them on for a while here. All right.
The vests are being distributed to you folks, just as a reminder, that that is a bright yellow-green. It is retro-reflective because we have people that are working out in the elements at night, the sleet, the wind, the snow, that they're working day and night to make sure that people have safe roadways, they have clean water, and fortunately downtown, we have a lot of construction as far as new infrastructure that even though it's a building and a hotel and a bowling alley and entertainment center or fieldhouse, a lot of times because we're building right up to the curb, the trucks and the vehicles and the equipment is out in the street. So we do the best we can to mark those or protect that equipment, but like Mayor Davis said, a lot of times it's the motorists that gets hurt. So they need to pay attention for their own care, but we are particularly interested in the safety of our workers, that we love our people, men and women out there working, and we think that every one of them deserves to go home at night. So we appreciate your emphasis on work zone awareness and hopefully people will pay attention while they're driving.
Is this particular design unique for highway and street workers, or would this be inappropriate to wear, riding a bike? The ones we have on now, are these unique for?
Well, I'm not sure. If they say city of Salina, then we'll get calls that we're goofing off again.
I'm probably not making a fashion statement the way I have mine on right now.
No, they are very protective and I would think that they're appropriate for us. They're not legal to go duck hunting in, though.
Right. The ducks would appreciate it. Yeah. Thank you. 3.2.
Item 3.2, the month of April, 2019, is Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Salina. Sheila Beeson, D-VAC Sexual Assault Advocate, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon. Yes, thank you for having us and giving us the opportunity to share this information. So to the people of Salina, greetings. Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community. The goal of Sexual Assault Awareness Month is to raise public awareness about sexual violence and educate communities on how to prevent it. Rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, and statistics show one in five women and one in 67 men will be raped at some point in their lives. Child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience sexual assault before the age of 18. On campus, one in five and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. In 2017, 33 incidents of sexual violence were reported to law enforcement in the city of Salina. I like to go on to say that many are not reported due to many reasons for fear, retaliation, and whatnot. The theme of this year's Sexual Assault Awareness Month campaign is "I Ask." The campaign champions the power of asking for consent, whether it be asking to hold someone's hand or for permission to share personal information with others, or if a partner is interested in sex. Consent is a clear, concrete example of what it takes to end sexual harassment, abuse, and assault. The goal of the campaign is to empower everyone to put consent into practice. "I Ask" is the statement by which individuals will demonstrate that asking for consent is a healthy, normal, and necessary part of everyday interactions. The Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas, otherwise known as D-VAC, is Salina's local Victims Advocacy and Services Program for people in our community who have had sexual and/or domestic violence inflicted upon them. We usually work with those in our community that are 16 and older, so, and then CAPS, they're amazing, we work with them with the children, too. So the city of Salina joins advocates and communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future. Now therefore, I, Trent Davis, Mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Thank you. And I'm judging by this flyer, we have, you have some events that probably should be announced over the air.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So we do just have a really powerful candlelight vigil at Kansas Wesleyan, we do that every year, and the outcome of that, you know, just lets the survivors know that they're listened to and prayed for. That's in a spiritual setting. We also have, and I really encourage everybody to go if they can, a speaker, Russ Tuttle, he is coming to Kansas Wesleyan, that is part of the Coalition Against Human Trafficking, CAPS is part of it, Kansas Wesleyan, Kansas AG's office, Attorney General's office, and Russ Tuttle is from Kansas City, and he'll be here April 15th at Sam's Chapel, so Kansas Wesleyan, it's free to go. He's going to be talking about how to prevent human trafficking, how to understand how it even happens. A lot of it is done online, and unfortunately, most youth that are, go into human trafficking are between the ages of 11 and 12 or 14, depending on which study, and so, of course, that kind of stems only into more sexual violence. So we want to prevent all of that. We also have some events coming up, too, for free yoga, healing yoga for sexual assault survivors and allies. So we encourage the community to come out and show survivors that they care and just want to get fit and do some self-care. And then we also have Speak Night. We're going to round out the month with that, with April 26th at 7:00 PM at Ad-Astra Books and Coffee House, and we're going to be co-hosting that with CAPS as well. And we're going to have poetry, music, dance, we're going to have all kinds of forms of art to help survivors heal, and so somebody could be a survivor and come read poetry, they can write poetry, they can be a supporter and ally, so we really encourage the community to come out to that, so.
Is there a minimum suggested age for any of these?
Well, let's see here, the minimum, I will say Speak Night, we tend to do more the child abuse prevention in the first part, and then the second half after intermission does tend to be a little bit more geared for sexual assault in general, so a lot of times families might leave with their children, so that's okay to do that. Really, everything else, there is no minimum age, so, yeah. Yep, so we just welcome the community to come to those things.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Come on up and give you a signed copy. Signed original.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Item 3.3, the month of April, 2019, is Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Salina. CAPS will read the proclamation, a member with CAPS will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon. My name is Becky Gassman, and I work for CAPS, and CAPS stands for Child Advocacy and Parenting Services. We are going to kind of ducktail what D-VAC had to say in some regards, but whereas we are living in a time when disclosure of sexual abuse and harassment are becoming mainstream, child sexual abuse still lives in secrecy and shame. In Kansas, reports of abuse have increased by 59 percent over the last 20 years, which indicates people are recognizing the signs. And whereas children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow, and whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Kansas families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently building the foundations of communities. And whereas by providing safe, stable, and nurturing relationships for our children, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Kansas children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. And whereas there were 1,044 cases of child abuse and neglect investigated by the Department for Children and Families in Saline County alone last year. And whereas Child Advocacy and Parenting Services, Inc., provides both prevention and intervention programs designed to reduce risk factors associated with child abuse and neglect while focusing on educating parents and empowering children. And whereas in 2018, 190 child victims of abuse or neglect and/or witnesses of a violent crime received advocacy, a medical exam, and care trained by a SAINT SART staff, that stands for Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner and Sexual Assault Response Team, a referral to trauma-focused mental health services, and a forensic interview held at Chris's Place, which is located in the CAPS building. These services are delivered through a multidisciplinary collaboration between city of Salina and Saline County law enforcement, CAPS, Salina Regional Health Center, Department for Children and Families, Child Protective Custody, Saline County Attorney's Office, Central Kansas Mental Health Center, and private therapists. And whereas Child Advocacy and Parenting Services began as a child abuse prevention coalition in 1978, the agency has a vision of a place where every child is safe, healthy, and strong. CAPS hopes to shine a light on abuse to create awareness and increase support through the following public events. The first one is Go Blue Salina, and that's where businesses are encouraged to let their employees wear blue jeans and/or royal blue, such as the color of my shirt, to collect funds to be given to CAPS, and you'll get a sticker. I know you'll, that's going to motivate you highly, get that sticker to show that they believe every child should be safe and loved. Then we have Splat for CAPS, which is a family paintball event at Elite Sports on Highway 81 at 10, and ends at 2 on Saturday, April 13th. The human trafficking training by Russ Tuttle that was mentioned by DECA will be held Monday, April 15th. There's an event at 8, 10:00 AM, and then another at 7:00 PM for the public. That's held at Kansas Wesleyan in Sam's Chapel. Speak Night is mentioned by DECA, the open mic event for performances of poetry and prose at Ad-Astra Books and Coffee House on Friday, April 26th from 7:00 to 9:00, and Pancakes for CAPS at Robbie's Cheesecakes, which will be held Saturday, April 27th from 8:00 to 10:00 AM. Therefore, I, Mayor Trent Davis, city of Salina, Saline County, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and encourage our citizens to lift up a child's voice.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Sounds like you've got the most funny events of anyone this year so far, and it's good for the purpose that you're raising awareness. I guess there's no reason for anyone in Salina or Saline County to claim they are uneducated on the topic. If you want to come forward, I'll give you the signed original proclamation. Well, we'll now move to the citizens' forum. Citizens can come to the podium to discuss any item not, excuse me, not on the agenda. If you can limit your comments to five minutes, or less. Anyone? No one? Saving it all for the individual topics then, all right. That's, we have no public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Do, should I read these into the record?
Do you have an opinion, Greg?
I'm comfortable not doing, but I think it's best for the clerk to read.
That'd be fine, yes.
All right, thank you.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of April 1st, 2019. Item 6.2, approve Resolution Number 19-7694, authorizing the city manager to renew an agreement for workers' compensation. Third-party administrator, TPA Services with CCMSI Incorporated. And item 6.3, approve Resolution Number 19-7693, authorizing the mayor to execute an underground coal shoots closure agreement allowing closure of an underground coal shoots in the public right-of-way located at 113 South Santa Fe Avenue with Marley LLC.
Okay, we'll be a little lax with Robert's Rules of Orders and send this, take the motion and the second as appropriate. Any, any public discussion? All right. All in favor approving this consent agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. And we can now move to administration.
Item 7.1, award contract for the Markley Magnolia Sewer System Improvements Project Number 08-2713.
And, welcome back to your second home here.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. This project before you today has been in play for many years, and the main delay has really been acquiring easements for the routing of the sanitary sewer line. These sewer improvements will provide sanitary sewer service to Highland Meadows, Hamlet Woodlands Edition, Great Life Golf and Fitness, Valley View Edition, Magnolia Hills Estates, and some undeveloped area in the county. There's a location map in your packet which highlights what's included in the project, but in general, constructing a new wastewater pump station and an abandoning one existing private pump station and one public pump station, installing about 8,200 linear feet of 8-inch and 10-inch gravity sewer pipe. In November of 2017, a resolution, a resolution was approved determining the feasibility and authorizing the sanitary sewer improvements, and noting cost for such improvements to be paid by special assessments and benefit fees. You could refer to Exhibit A in your packet, which identifies the benefit district and the cost recovery areas. Approximately 11 percent of the cost is proposed to be paid by special assessments, and 89 percent is to be paid by the city at large for the cost recovery areas. These cost recovery areas are outside the city limits, and therefore, a benefit fee will be charged if and when this property is served by these sewer improvements. In August of 2018, staff submitted an application to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for a Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund loan. This loan was approved, and it includes $1,950,000 for construction and $190,000 for contingency funds. Three bids were received on March 19th. The low bid was from Smokey Hill LLC in the amount of $1,332,595. Second bid was from Noah Construction Company Incorporated, the amount of $1,949,869. Sepulpa Digging Incorporated in the amount of $2,555,000 rounds out our third bid. The engineer's estimate was $1,843,323. KDHE has reviewed and approved the bid documents and is in agreement with the city's recommendation to award to Smokey Hill LLC, which is the low bid. Smokey Hill LLC's bid was somewhat lower than our engineer's estimate. Our staff reviewed the differences, and the majority fall within five categories, one being mobilization, the sewer line, wastewater pump stations, and the manhole site preparation. Smokey Hill is a local contractor, he's done numerous jobs in Salina, so he's very familiar with the soil conditions here and what to expect in the field, and he knows our requirements and what we expect of a contractor, and he is comfortable with this bid at $1,332,595. It's anticipated that construction will incur April 2019 through March 2020. Excuse me. A budget allocation of $2,250,000 for this project was included in the 2018 capital improvement program. As I mentioned, the loan agreement includes $1.950,000 for construction. The loan interest rate was at 2.54 percent. The loan repayment costs for these improvements are included in our 2019 through 2013 water and sewer rates. Staff has included the addition of a 5 percent construction contingency, and this contingency will be a total of the individual change orders will not exceed 5 percent without bringing that back to the city commission for additional work. With the 5 percent contingency, the authorized amount would be $1,399,225. The staff offers the following options for the city commission's consideration. Award the contract for the Markley Magnolia Sewer Improvements Project Number 08-2713, Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund, Project Number C20-205001 to Smokey Hill LLC of Salina, Kansas, in the amount of $1,332,595. And with the 5 percent contingency, a total of $1,399,225. The second option would to be to reject all bids and provide further direction. Staff recommends option one. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
I just, I just want to say, I am very, very happy to see it stay local. So, I mean, it's, it's good to have our local bidders win the contract, so, thank you.
Any other questions?
Do we borrow the full amount that we requested and then pay it down, or can we just borrow what we need?
What we do is we have to request reimbursements as we spend the money, so at the end of the duration, we'll only pay for the amount that we borrow. Yes.
I just had a quick question about the 89 percent cost recovery area. Is that something where, whether it takes five years or 20 years or 50 years, eventually if that area is absorbed within the city, those properties will contribute the balance at that time? Is that correct? Or?
Yes, and I believe with the interest over time, if I understand the process correctly.
Right. That's been our past practice, the interest number is intended to recognize kind of the upfront cost and the cost over time, but that can be, that can add up for an unspecified amount of time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tasker. Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, move it back to the commission for action. Mayor Davis, I move we award the contract for the Markley Magnolia Sewer System Improvements, Project Number 08-2713, KWPCRF Project Number C20-205001 to Smokey Hill LLC of Salina, Kansas, in the amount of $1,332,595, authorizing, authorized amount with 5 percent contingency, bringing the total to $1,399,225.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Won't repeat all of that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five, zero. 7.2.
Item 7.2, consider request for Section 888 Special Alcohol Special Alcohol Program Funding for the 2019-2020 funding period.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, through state statute, there's very specific process for redistribution of a portion of the state's liquor, alcoholic liquor taxes to cities and counties for the use and for further distribution, and there's three permitted purposes. The first is general fund expenditures. Second is special parks and recreation fund expenditures. And the third is special alcohol and drug expenditures. The statute limits states that a city of population of more than 6,000 shall receive 70% of the amount that's collected. Of the 70% of the amount that's collected, the city is required to deposit 1/3 of that amount into the city general fund, 1/3 into a special parks and recreation fund, and 1/3 into a special alcohol and drug program fund. The money...the estimates come from the state treasurer. They come every year, and that amount comes from the state treasurer. We're funding on a two-year period, so we're estimating what that amount will be over two years. 1/3 of the funds that goes to the special alcohol fund can be used only for the purchase, establishment, maintenance, and education, or expansion of services or programs whose principal purpose is alcoholism and drug abuse prevention and education, alcohol and drug detoxification, intervention in alcohol and drug abuse or treatment of persons who are alcoholics or drug abusers or in danger of becoming alcoholics or drug abusers. In order to utilize these funds in compliance with the state statute, city staff conducted an RFP, provided that to all previous applicants, as well as posting it in a local newspaper and on the city's website, with a deadline of March 15th, 2019. Since the actual amount of funds received by the city can vary over a two-year cycle, awards have been given as a percentage of the funds actually received rather than a specific dollar amount. Over the past 10 years, the agencies that have requested and received funding have pretty much stayed the same over the three years. There's been a few that have come in and out. In 2017, we had requests from the Central Kansas Foundation, St. Francis, and the Ashby House. And at that point, the request came in at over $700,000, and our estimate was only $350,000. And at that time, commission decided to split that 1/3, 1/3, 1/3, as opposed to go in any other direction. We received two responses prior to the due date, one from Central Kansas Foundation for a request of $200,000, one from St. Francis Community Services in the amount of $147,590. We received a response from Ashby House after the due date in the amount of $120,000. All of three...all agencies are here with representatives. I'd like to give them just a moment to give you kind of a brief overview of what they provide before you have to make a decision. And so the public kind of knows what they provide. If you want to come forward, just a brief.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name's Shane Hudson. I'm the CEO at Central Kansas Foundation, also known as CKF Addiction Treatment. You may have noticed our new building over here at the old Calm Care site. In 2017, we served 1,966 patients at Central Kansas Foundation. With that being said, we had over $100,000 of services that we had to write off, so therefore uncompensated care. And within that environment of not always receiving the funds, we need to provide our basic treatment services, which range from education to assessment, outpatient services, detoxification, and residential treatment at our 30-bed facility here in Salina for the detox and residential. In the middle of that, we're also trying to expand quality of services to treat our patients in the best way possible and to provide evidence-based care. So, the funding that we're requesting, the $100,000 per year for a period of two years, would go towards a number of things, and I'll list those briefly. One would be medication-assisted treatment. We do have a medication-assisted treatment clinic that we're working on expanding as we speak. That involves a nursing staff 40 hours per week, and we're hiring on an APRN staff. Through that clinic, we can provide medication to treat the biology of addiction, for opioid use disorder, and also alcohol use disorder, to provide better outcomes and better overall care for the patients we serve. Also nicotine replacement therapy. We went 100% tobacco-free at all of our facilities last year. We're the first facility in Kansas to go 100% tobacco-free for an intermediate residential treatment center. Some other centers have done detox and outpatient previously, but we were the first to do intermediate. With that comes an additional cost to provide nicotine replacement therapy through patches, gums, lozenges to the patients we serve while they're on treatment with us. There's no billing mechanism for those components. You'll see that most patients with a drug or alcohol addiction who do pass away from some ailment typically due to tobacco use or illness related to tobacco use. So, we're trying to provide education and treatment and medication around tobacco use disorder while we're also treating other substance use disorders. The MyStrengths phone app is a phone app that has evidence-based treatment curriculum embedded into the app, as well as addresses whole health, has some components of exercise, diet, depression, anxiety, as well as substance use disorder to close gaps between treatment delivery. So, when patients are at home, nights, weekends, they can connect to this app. They can set goals, and they can work on evidence-based curriculum. That's not a reimbursable application. It's something that we thought was good for our patients to have access to when they come to treatment. There's also a component for family members to access that phone app. Pathfinder Recovery Center is an open access center that's open six days per week. That's Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Saturdays from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. We also have a running club on Saturday mornings that involves our residential patients, as well as people from the community who wish to show up and run from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. We have a group of staff, including myself, who show up and participate in that. It's been a really great thing. We've been doing for less than a year now. And over the winter months, we did some exercises at Pathfinder instead of going outside in the elements. And then also the City Go bus passes. We utilize those to help patients get to and from appointments. As Pathfinder operates as essentially a case management service that's not always reimbursable, and when patients access that service without an assessment, we can't get paid for those direct access services. That our Pathfinder Recovery staff, who are individuals in recovery themselves for at least a year or longer, most of our staff two years or longer, can provide access to resources such as employment, education, housing, food, et cetera, work with the patients to access resources in the community outside of their treatment curriculum. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
You do medical billing, insurance billing, when it's available and appropriate for the service?
We do. So, we have block grant funding each year. That's a specific amount that we always go above and beyond because we want to serve patients even if they don't have an ability to pay, and we're out of that block grant funding for patients who are 200% or below the federal poverty level and don't have any other insurance. We accept private insurance, Medicaid, self-pay, and referrals from various locations, criminal justice, medical, primary care, acute care, self-referrals, and we get some referrals from out of state.
All right, now first, and just my patients, how busy you are and the service you provide. Did you increase the number of bids?
We did. We increased from 24 to 30 beds. It's a co-ed facility for individuals 18 years and older.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Monague. I'm with St. Francis Community Services, and I'm the Director of our Behavioral Health. Our program serves a lot of teens in our community. And we have, over the past two years, discovered that, working with truancy court, we also now are serving parents and teens from the same family. We've discovered that family services is a key to families and children and teens' healing in our community. We find that without the ability to serve the family, we are unable to help families heal and become more successful. Without the funding, we won't be able to work with the schools as well or with truancy court. We often find that kids get put in detention in Junction City and other places, and we often will go to the courthouse to save Salina a trip for bringing clients here to be assessed because the assessors in Junction City don't want to provide services to our kids there. So, we find the importance of going up to the courthouse and providing assessments to be a key to getting kids into inpatient or getting kids back home to their families to help the healing process begin. I thank you for the opportunity to present our grant, and I accept any questions.
Any questions? It's a pleasure to have to choose, and use the word loosely, among such great organizations. Thank you.
I don't think the representative from Ashby House was available at the time today. One thing that should be noted is that staff has not provided an opinion of or made a funding recommendation based on the relative merits of one request or agency compared to the other. There will be no direct fiscal impact of the city of Salina because this is a pass-through of funds received. It is noted, though, that we have recommended a percentage allocation because we don't know what the exact amount's going to be. And in the event that that amount comes in lower than what we would estimate, we wouldn't want to be committed to somebody for those additional dollars. It will be necessary for us to draft and execute a funding agreement with each agency that has awarded funds. At this time, city commission's direction is requested regarding the allocation of funds in response to the proposals received. Based on the direction provided, staff will draft funding agreements for execution of the mayor. We've kind of laid out a few options, and I'm sure there may be others. The first option is just to provide a proportional distribution to all respondents based on their request. In this event, Kansas...Central Kansas Foundation requested 42.8% of the total request, so they would be funded that amount. And then St. Francis is 31.6%, and Ashby House is 25.16%. Another option would be to proportionally distribute to those timely filed respondents up to their requested amount, with any remaining funds being allocated to Ashby House. In this case, Central Foundation...Central Kansas Foundation would be allocated 57.5% up to the $200,000 that they requested. And St. Francis Community Services would be allocated 42.5% up to the $147,590 that they requested. And any additional funds that were received would go to Ashby House up to the $120,000 that they requested. Third option is proportional to agencies that filed on time. And in the event of excess funds, we could solicit additional proposals for either the original respondents or new RFP out of all agencies in which Ashby House would be allowed to submit their proposal. The fourth option is to just do like we did last time and split it 33.3% to all. This would leave Central Kansas Foundation getting 70.76% of their request, St. Francis getting 95.89% of their request, and Ashby House getting 117.94% of their request, would be approximately $141,525,000 each. And the last option is to award each applicant a specific amount based on the city commission's direction. As previously discussed in the fiscal note, the amount of funds to be received is unknown, so options one, two, or four is recommended since it avoids any fiscal impact to the city in the event that the funds received are less than the estimate and do not create additional staffing for the awards. I can answer any questions, or can you move on?
I just got one, or maybe two. Did Ashby House give a reason why they were late?
They did. The RFP that went out went to them, and it was forwarded to a staff member that was in the time being left their facility, and it stayed on their desk and was not picked up. And then they recognized that it didn't get happen, and they contacted us and asked us if they could go ahead and submit it. And we said, "Go ahead, we'll present it as that and move forward."
And then I also noticed that last year and this year here both... Is there a reason why Catholic charities dropped their asking for any allocation? Are they not providing those services anymore?
I don't know, and they did not...they didn't provide me that information. The other agencies might know.
Okay.
Any unused funds?
Any unused funds? If we don't use them, we can leave in the fund. Statute does not allow...does not require us to distribute. We could leave them in the fund, and then we could use them as part of the next two-year cycle. So, if there is funds left over, we could do that. Or we could go out for another RFP. We wouldn't know that until the very end of...probably the very end of the two-year cycle, though. So...
That's true.
Because it's a two-year cycle. We probably won't reach that 425...the 425,000 is the estimate for both, for two years.
So, it was staff's discretion to add Ashby House into this?
We spoke to city manager, and we just wanted you to have the information. That's all. That's why we're presenting it.
Is that a standard?
Well, we felt an obligation to at least make you aware that the request came in. We didn't feel like if we precluded that information from going forward, then you're kind of left uninformed, and Ashby House doesn't have the opportunity to address you. So, we tried to disclose that. We invited Ashby House to come and address you with the thinking that we'd probably have to have a complicated conversation today to try to sort it out.
They were notified that today's meeting?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anymore?
I guess, in light of our study session, if we were to award to Central Kansas Foundation and St. Francis Community Services in their entirety, what happens to the excess money? You indicated that going out for another RFP would be a possibility for excess funds. Do those excess funds ever get diverted into our general fund?
No.
They are completely separate? They're a pass-through only?
Correct.
Yeah, because of the statutory prescription that the way that 1/3 has to be allocated to special alcohol and drug programs, I think the only...I think Ms. Pax is correct. The only deviation from that would be if we wanted to take up drug and alcohol programs.
Provide those services.
Right. Or I think, did I see something about Parks Project or something?
Parks gets 1/3 of it. But it's very specific in the statute that they get 1/3. The alcohol gets 1/3, and the general fund gets 1/3.
I think if word gets out in two years that money was left over, you'll see about 15.
Right.
Applications.
I would guess that, too. And as agencies, they probably know what they were awarded before. I mean, there's a whole cycle to it, so...
Or if they're smart, they'll ask for more money the next time.
That's right. That doesn't preclude us from awarding them more money than what they asked for, either.
Good point.
I mean, that's your option.
Any comments from anyone in the audience? All righty, let's hash this out. How do we want to go about doing this?
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, I'm leaning towards number two there, the staff recommendations. I guess I'm...it's regrettable that Ashby House was late. I don't know the exact reasoning for that, but they also haven't come here to represent themselves today. So, I think the first two applicants that made it timely finally deserve the requests that they have made. That's me.
I think I'm right on the same page as you are that Central Kansas Foundation and St. Francis should be funded in their entirely entirety. And then if we have anything above and beyond that, that we can apply to Ashby House. I mean, I know if they weren't such an awesome organization, and I didn't know that they did such good work, you know, I could see excluding them. But I'm fine with option number two.
And I believe I was leaning towards two or three, but I believe the presentation, as far as the written material, CKF and St. Francis do meet the criteria to a stronger degree than Ashby House does. So, I would...I'd be fine with number two. Do we need a motion?
Sooner or later, yeah. How are we going to word this? Mayor Davis, I move we approve proportional distribution to timely filed respondents up to their requested amount, with remaining funds allocated to Ashby House, being staff recommendation number two.
Second.
All right. Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to nothing. Thank you. And 7.3.
Item 7.3, Resolution Number 19-7695, authorizing $60,000 in grant funds to the Salina Airport Authority for air service marketing funding for 2019 to 2020.
I'm sorry, I kept waiting for someone to come up.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you may recall, previously, the city commission approved a $50,000 grant to the airport authority to partially offset local matching of a total amount of...
to partially offset local matching, a total amount of $125,000 for marketing, carrier marketing incentives, a total of $200,000 for the Fly Salina marketing initiative. We recently changed air carriers, and between the combination of the air carrier services, the routes, and the marketing, we've seen exceptional improvements in employment that I'm going to turn the floor over to Tim Rogers to speak to in greater detail. But the item that's before you today is a request for $60,000 from the city for air service marketing and promotion in 20, I'm sorry, that was the amount in 2018, 2019, and this request is same amount for 2019, 2020. The total marketing effort budget is $193,500, with $73,500 of that coming from the airport authority, $60,000 from the county, and $60,000 from the city of Salina. With respect to the study session conversation we just had, this was budgeted, it is budgeted out of the Economic Development Fund of those sales tax funds. There is currently a balance of $854,000 in that fund. It should be noted that there's a $387,500 budget commitment remaining from this fund for the annual appropriation of funds to the EDO, and then there's also an allocation for the Innovation Foundation. If they're successful in getting their preservation, historic preservation grant for the roof, we committed up to as much as $75,000 for that project. So accounting for all of that, we still anticipate that at year-end, there'd be an approximate fund balance of $760,985, accounting for money in and money out. So recapping, the request before you is to formally commit to the $60,000 that have been budgeted as part of this year's budget, coming out of the Economic Development Fund. And I believe with help with computer presentation and Mr. Rogers, he's prepared to speak to you about implementments and what this marketing has done for us previously and what it'll do going forward.
Mr. Rogers, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, thank you for the consideration this afternoon of a request for $60,000 to be matched by funds from the Salina Airport Authority in Salina County. Pretty timely at this point. This past Sunday marked the completion of 52 weeks of United Jet Service to Denver and Chicago operated by SkyWest Airlines. And in that period of time, 35,191 total passengers passed through the Salina Regional Airport, the MJ Kennedy Air Terminal. That's 17,600 passengers that were outbound and 17,590 passengers that were inbound for that 52-week period of time. This marketing campaign does match up with the EAS contract effective date, which was effective on April 9 of last year, so we're working on April to March, April 2019 to March of 2020. And we can, at this point, and with the efforts on the marketing, I think we have some, and we're able to report on some, I think, wins. And I think, I think the wins are, I'll summarize those, then open up for any questions that the commissioners may have. On the traffic wins, it's pretty, with the numbers, it's pretty significant to see a 53 percent increase in total employments in our market. And again, a pretty much a success in the sense of hearing back from United and SkyWest, what are their expectations? We actually met and exceeded expectations, and it's going to lead to some possibilities in the future as we look ahead as far as continued improvement as far as air service. I think when we look at wins, also have to count airfare, and one of the great functions and significant functions that Gary Foss, who is Salina's air service consultant, Gary and his staff with the Arcstar Group regularly monitors airfares and looks at airfares, and we've really had the wins in areas of ensuring that our airfares are competitive with area airports. That's just not Wichita, that's Kansas City primarily. And working with United, we have, we can, we do see, we see, I see a frequent report from Gary and his staff that Salina is competitive on both business and leisure fares. All of the top 15 markets at Salina are lower or within a $25 of the fares United offers on a one-way basis, for example, compared to Wichita. 13 of the top 15 markets at Salina are within acceptable range to what United offers on a renter basis to leisure travelers out of Wichita. And the same is with Kansas City. What we're doing is we're pulling primarily folks off the highways and keeping them in our area, and Salina is the airport of convenience for north central Kansas growing, and we've got another, we've got more gains that are out there. The media wins, we have been very pleased with the results of the, especially the social media, the digital and native digital, digital and Facebook campaigning. As of today, it was over 3 million impressions that have been recorded, measured by the marketing firm, the placement firm out of Denver, Colorado, E-Meco, able to measure how many impressions that are out there. Added to that, billboards, over 317,000 impressions per week on the billboards along I-70 and I-135. AMC Theater, Salina, we are, there's a 32nd commercial there before the feature, before the films, 399,000 impressions annually, and great success at the Tony's Pizza Event Center. The United marketing materials there, over 150,000 annual visitors to the Tony's Pizza Event Center, and of course, we have the ad on the marquee on Ohio. So we are also seeing progress in, we call product wins, getting area residents and businesses signed up for the travel programs that United offers that offer savings and benefits to travelers. That's for the individual, that's Mileage Plus, getting the individual signed up to get the rewards for flying United Airlines. Perks Plus is the business program. That enables businesses to sign up and gain advantages for the businesses. We have been working, for example, with the Kansas Wesleyan University and the Kansas Association of Independent Colleges, K-State, Salina Regional Health Center, other major organizations and businesses, so they, as an organization, can take advantage of United's travel programs. And then also group and meeting travel. That is a great benefit for groups as few as 10 people. A group fare can be negotiated with United, and also the Convention Visitors Bureau visits Salina for the meetings here. Convention codes are being used now for travel in and out of Salina. So we are, will continue that activity as we go into the coming year, as we look at the coming year and the plan for the continuing the campaign and Fly Salina and getting the word out. We will then continue to monitor Salina's market performance at other markets, the local marketing efforts, the sales calls, really the corporate and individual travel programs, coordinating the fares. GSA, Government Services Administration fares, making sure they're in the market so the employees of the federal agencies that travel in and out of this area or take advantage of published government fares. Seeing monthly traffic and revenue trends, seeing how we're comparing, and making sure if we're seeing traffic that is in an area that we should be maybe asking United to do a special fare to, we certainly get that to them and get that on their radar. So where do we go as far as the future, and where do we find our next steps? And it will be with the activity that we've seen and the good numbers we've seen just in 52 weeks in a short period of time, and a load factor that we're seeing out of Salina, both to Denver and Chicago. We can begin to talk to United and SkyWest about an additional flight to Chicago. Instead of one daily flight, get to two daily flights. We can talk about Denver nonstop, removing the haze tag, to use the industry term, and have those Denver flights be nonstop. And we're seeing great demand and interest in Houston, so we will visit with United and SkyWest about Houston. So start thinking about a second Chicago flight to get you thinking and discussing Chicago, Salina, Houston, and we already, since we already have two flights into Denver. So there is a great opportunity out there. The Salina County Commissioners will be entertaining, will be considering their $60,000 contribution tomorrow morning at their 9:00 AM meeting. The airport authority's contribution or budget amount, some $73,000, is already in our budget for this year. Be glad to answer any questions that the commissioners may have.
I have some questions, but if you guys could come back to me if there's anybody else that has questions.
No questions. We'll come back slowly.
That was, that was quick, all right. Well, bear with me as I look through my notes here, I'm not as organized as I would like to be. Mr. Rogers, so you are, you have your own budget, you're your own taxing entity. I guess my question is, I'm not understanding the request. I mean, if you needed, I was just looking in terms of what we've invested in economic development with the airport authority over, well, since 2016, and I'm just, I'm just kind of curious, you know, why that isn't just, you know, built into, you know, increasing however your, you know, your taxes or your budget are done.
The Salina Airport Authority's operating budget is not reliant upon tax revenue. So it is relied upon the revenue generated from airport operating revenue, lease revenue from the management of the lease holdings of the airport authority. Salina Airport Authority's taxing authority and uses of property taxes used for capital improvements only, so it is not used for operating expenses.
Like marketing?
Yes, and so, and this is about partnership, too. This is about, you know, being able to demonstrate and showing to the city, to the city-county airport authority partnership with United Airlines and SkyWest Airlines. And so it's, that is how this was approached a number of years ago when we pitched the idea of air service development, going from, to the Denver flights initially, and Great Lakes with just a United code share, and then the transition to United Jet Service, true United brand. So, and the airport authority board of directors has targeted earmarked the $73,000 and to have a full, robust, and effective marketing campaign that we have had the last year, asking the participation partnership with the city and the county.
Gotcha. Thank you, I appreciate that clarification because I didn't realize that the taxing money that you receive can only go to capital improvements. I did not, I did not understand that distinction, so thank you, I appreciate that. Just getting back in terms of what we've invested since 2016, including this request, it would be, for media campaigns, it looks like we're at about 170, and the Baker Donaldson Group, our portion of the lobbyists was 30. And then, I couldn't remember how much Beechcraft Road came in, at about a million bucks?
Roughly, yeah.
Roughly, yeah.
And that is a city road and a city project.
Right, right, right. So, but in, but in terms of, and this isn't specifically directed like at the airport authority, it's more of a general economic development question, you know, just in terms of that, because that was, I believe, how the Beechcraft Road at least was pitched to us. One component of that was economic development, making it a more attractive entrance to the community and having it upgraded near KSU Poly for any expansion that they wanted to do with their UAS system is how, that was how, what appealed to it about me.
And for the aviation program, just unmanned and unmanned.
Right.
And as the K-State is able to, brings to the community the results of the Global Aeronautics Initiative, I think it'll become more clear as far as the impact of good quality infrastructure at the airport, airport industrial center, as with any other part of our community, a gateway, that, I think that will come clear over time.
I hope so, because I think KSU Poly, at least for me anyway, is going to be getting a lot tougher questions in the future because I feel like we kind of made a good faith investment, and I'm very hopeful that at some point, we're going to receive some dividends on that investment.
And I do see your point, and it is first in. Those dollars were first in as far as the community into that project to promote development and growth of the campus.
Right. And then I have some questions, I think, more directed to city staff in terms of, you know, Mr. Rogers spoke to partnerships, and I think it would have been really awesome if Mr. Robinson from the Salina Community Economic Development Organization would have been here to vouch for that, or a representative from the chamber, or a representative from Visit Salina, because I think you're right, I think it's all about partnerships, and you're carrying the flag for this, but it does impact a lot of other agencies. So I'd just like to express my disappointment in those various organizations, that none of them stuck around to support you in that. And that also works into, in terms of our economic development financing, we have, we've talked about getting an incentives policy in place to help us, to help guide us in the use of that fund, and I know past practice has been that we invest in infrastructure and things that remain in the community no matter what. The Beechcraft Road is a good example of that. We make investments in infrastructure upgrades or whatever. Do we foresee, when we're actually going to have an economics, economic development incentive so that we will be able to say it meets this criteria, this criteria, this criteria? And that's what makes it either a good or a bad bet?
Yeah. We've got a couple of things going on. Staff has done a good job of inventorying, summarizing, kind of building a webpage of our current incentives, and I've reviewed that in one pass, and it's nearing completion. But having said that, it's more a summary of our current approach than it is a recommended approach going forward. And as recently as today, or Friday, I can't remember which, had a conversation with staff about, as we look at some of these budgetary items, revisiting entitlement-type incentives and making them more discretionary, and that's where criteria like you're talking about probably would be applicable. Now, with respect to investments in the community previously, I think we have had conversations about, when that's the case, the benefit of that, but I don't think we have a policy or practice in place that exclusively needs to be that at the moment.
Right, and I guess, and just humor me because I just, I have to get this out because I'm just so, I'm so angry. I mean, if I can just be perfectly honest, when we set up the Salina Community Economic Development Organization, my hope, and it was obviously extremely naive, that when we start sending somebody $300,000, $400,000 a year, that they're going to kind of serve as the vetting agency, or the agency that's taking the lead in helping us develop these economic development policies. And yet, here you are, Tim, bless your heart, standing up here all by yourself without any backup from our Economic Development Organization. So I realize that we had at least committed, when we were doing our budget process last year, to a three-year commitment, but I hope that it's something that when we're going through the budget process again this year, that we can take another look at that and see if that's the best investment, or maybe we'd just be better off managing it in-house. So my frustration, Tim, is not particularly directed at you, it's directed at this whole economic development process, or lack thereof, that we're in. And, you know, when we ask, how did we get here, and what are, you know, you know, what are we going to do in the future? Well, this is just not, it's just not working, at least in one of, as one of five, it's not working in my opinion. So, thank you.
I feel obligated to clarify that we, staff did not identify nor invite the EDO to participate in this process. I completely understand your point, but...
Oh, and yeah, and I would like to note that the EDO was here for the study session. The EDO, like every other citizen in Salina, had access to this agenda as of Thursday night, and the EDO could have chosen to stay here and speak to this if it is an important economic development initiative and opportunity and investment.
Or it's a reflection of how well people think Mr. Rogers can handle things by himself.
And I do believe that the jet air service we have is a tremendous asset to the, to the community. Whether we've seen any economic development through that yet or not, I think it does two things. It helps solidify our current employers, it makes it much easier for them to reach destinations, and as our EDO is out calling on new individuals, as a former individual that sat on a board that looked at economic development, we would be thrown out of certain opportunities just for the fact that we didn't have air service directly into Salina, that they'd have to either fly into Wichita or Kansas City and drive here. So I do believe that the jet air service, at least to Chicago and Denver at this time, is advantageous for the community, and we need to do what we can to keep it and expand on it if possible, so.
I just wanna, the Resolution 19-7695, at the top says, "Marketing Funding for 2019, 2020," and at the bottom, it says, "Approve Res for 2018, 2019." Is this, so we're doing the, the 2019, 2020, right?
Correct. And the, where did you see the 20?
At the very bottom of page one.
At the very bottom of the blue sheet of the first page.
Okay. Um, yes, it is 2019, 2020. And I think the actual resolution is correct. That's probably a cut and paste error that carried over from the last report.
I just...
Okay. No, I, I would just like to say, it's, it's a very proud feeling when you're walking down the aisle in Denver International or O'Hare, and you look up and you see Salina on that board, right next to all the other big cities. It's like, yeah, that's my home, that's where I'm going. And it is nice when you can invite people to fly directly here. Of course, it doesn't instantly turn into jobs, but when people get used to the idea that, whoa, there's an airport here, you can fly right in, I think it does elevate the city. We have an airport, we have a medical school, we have this, we have that, and after a while, I'm hoping, the image of this city is a place you wanna really move a company to or start a business in, and it will be much brighter than what it has been.
That's the thought. I can tell you, my personal experience recently was, I was just looking for the, the most affordable way to get from Salina to my destination. And by the time you factored in mileage and parking fees, it, it was the most affordable by far.
Well, I'm sorry, thank you for reminding me of that. Is there anyone from the public? And staff are included as public. Anyone who would like to, because we may be out of, we got too public here. Anyone would like to make any comments? Alright, bring it back to the commissioners.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 19-7695, authorizing $60,000 in grant funds to the Salina Airport Authority for air service marketing funding for 2019, 2020.
Second?
It moved in second to approve Resolution 19-7695. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. And we may now go to 7.4. Thank you for coming by, Mr. Rogers.
Item 7.4, First Reading Ordinance Number 19-10999, approving the Spielman Plaza Completion Party Sponsored by Seraphim Bread as a Special Event, and authorizing the sale, possession, and consumption of alcoholic liquor within the boundaries of barricaded public areas at such event.
Ms. Driscoll.
I'm looking at Dean, because he's down here, so I'm wondering if he wants me to do this, or if he would like to do this. Okay. Maybe a little bit of background to give you some information. As you're aware, we now have real beer under the CMB alcohol law as of April 1st. With many of the exciting things going on downtown, many folks are trying to kinda get their events lined up for the summer, and Tyler with Seraphim Bread approached us and said, "I'd like to do a plaza opening party. What should I do? We'd like to, to serve beer and have some food and have a good time." And normally, we would've done a CMB permit for that. Those can be approved here internally at the city. We don't have that kind of CMB anymore. So the way the, the revision to the law was, is that the specific tax amendments that you adopted, and that's actually how they're reflected at state level, speak only to the retail CMB side of that, not to the special event permit. And it adds a phrase called enhanced CMB beverages. That was not added to the special event permit. We thought, okay, well, that change wasn't made, maybe that was the intent, and when we called the liquor distributors to find out, "Do you even still have weak beer?", the answer is, no, it's been destroyed. You can't even get it anywhere in the state. So we are a staff, kind of dealing with, you know, how do we, and, and dealing with the state and talking to them, how do, how do we address the CMB special event permit? But in the meantime, Tyler is in all of this. And so, in talking with Tyler and how we could work with his event, we hustled, and what you have in front of you is the alcoholic liquor special event permit. Typically, you can do four of these a year by state law. Tyler doesn't plan to do anymore, but this special event permit would allow him to hold the party, would allow alcohol within this particular area. So you have seen these before, so that gives you a little bit of background on how this particular event came to be. And then the, it breaks down into those state rules as far as where the alcohol can, can be had. It's, it's got boundaries, you've got the maps here that are attached. And with that, I'm happy to take questions. Dean's happy to answer any questions. Tyler is aware that this is very date-specific, so it's not like the CMB special event permit where you could give us a rainout date and we could do something. This is like, this is your date. And we've got this timed, so we can get through the two readings before his event, which is scheduled. So that's why we had to get it on tonight's agenda. So for commission action, you can approve Ordinance 19-10999, approving the Spielman Plaza Completion Party as a special event, authorizing the sale, possession, and consumption of alcohol liquor within the barricaded area proposed in the Spielman Plaza during the event, or approve Ordinance 19-10999, approving the Spielman Plaza Completion Party as a special event with any modification of the location size, date, and time of the proposed event, or three, decline the approval of Ordinance Number 19-10999, and deny the approval of the proposed special event.
Who's required to monitor the, the site location to make sure individuals are not leaving with alcohol? Is that the event coordinator's job?
Dean, do you wanna chime in? You've done many more of these than me.
Temporary permit, the way that this works is that the state will not issue a permit until you, as a governing body, approve an ordinance approving the event. So the licensee will be Seraphim Bread, and Tyler knows and understands that it will be his responsibility as a license holder to monitor that. So the license is being issued to him via Seraphim Bread, and it will be Tyler's responsibility to monitor that.
He's responsible for everything. Monitoring, the alcohol stays there, monitoring, that no one underage?
Hosting signs, issuing the ID bands that he plans to do, making sure there's no underage individuals served. That all falls on the licensee.
Is security required? It's been a while since I've had an indoor permit for alcoholic beverages, but I thought at that time, we had to actually have a, what was it, an armed security on premises in a building, or certain numbers of security?
There is no requirement under the state law or city code that Tyler hire an outside security company or firm. He is just, licensees who hold licenses are responsible for anything that occurs under that license. So unauthorized entry or exit, and that will all fall to the licensee, but he is not required to hire a private security firm or anything to monitor that, or off-duty police or any of that. He is required to carry liability insurance for anything that occurs as part of the event.
Does that have to be shown to staff prior to the event, then?
Yes. And I, I think we have that already.
Quick question. Let's say, in the blue sheet, it said something about, in case of inclement weather, that it was gonna be postponed to May 4th, but you said that, and I looked in the ordinance, and it's date-specific, so would we have the, how would we handle it if he, if it does get rained out on, on the 27th?
I have told Tyler that if he doesn't hold it on the 27th, that it would be too quick a turnaround to get another ordinance done for the May date, so he could have the event, he just would not be able to serve alcoholic beverages. He could have food, but not the alcohol part.
Because the Saturday would occur too late to get it into our packet for the Monday meeting, so even if we were willing to do like an emergency first and second reading on the same day, it's still...
Well, the other complication is that there's no meeting scheduled for the 29th of April.
Of course, that's right, that's the, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's where, I mean, this whole thing and why we're working with, just all, of all the downtown arts and entertainment stuff, the timing is quite excellent, that we have the alcohol topic coming up in May, of trying to kinda figure out, what is our future hold on this? Because it's a two-step process before you even get to the state to have that approval. So even if you had a rainout date, you still have to come back, go through our dates, to then go back to the state. So it's, and that's why, I mean, the internal process for the CMB special event was much more timely and, and successful process, so we gotta figure out how this is gonna apply.
So licensee can get four permits in a year. Do, do we know if we were motivated to try to account for the two possible dates, one of them being a rainout, how the state might react to that?
Well, the, the, in, the language in Section 1 says that the governing body's approving this event, but it's subject to the issuance of a temporary permit, and they will not issue the temporary permit until the prospective licensee furnishes them a copy of the ordinance approving their event. So the challenge would be to how, if, if the event got rained out, how we would then get an ordinance created?
What I'm saying is, we, between first and second reading, we have two dates, recognizing they can have four events, and if we needed to provide that the second date's only a rainout, if the first date is rained out?
We will defer to our counsel, and this is what we were advised by Mr. Peterson with Clark Myes as to how to address this. So I told Mr. Gallagher that if he did have a rainout, that he would have to be alcohol-free on the May date. But if there's a different way to do that, by not being date-specific, staff is certainly open to that.
Or could we be date-specific, but with two ordinances? I mean, I don't know what Tyler's plans are for the rest of the year, if he, you know, I mean, right now, he's not thinking about having any further, but if he would be willing to use two strikes, potentially, and I don't even know if, you know, in terms of the state, if they would count it against him if he didn't then need to use his May 4th permit.
Well, I'm hoping too, I mean, by the time somebody needs to be using their third or fourth one, we've kinda figured out a, a different possibility, so.
I guess what I'd propose is, if legal counsel agrees that that's not too significant in that change between first and second reading, you could act tonight on first reading, and we can try to sort this out between first and second.
Either by having a second ordinance or by having an alternate date.
Is it, do we have a sense as to the position of ABC on, I understand the distinction, as I understand the, the thought, we would be actually approving the plan as though there are two separate temporary permits on the two dates, knowing that one will be used and one will not be used? Is that the model that we're speaking of? I don't know of any reason that that wouldn't work from the city's standpoint. I don't know if we have a sense of, I assume there's a fee associated at the ABC level?
There is, but I don't...
And we would have a...
So I guess the question would be, as, and Shandy was involved with this as well, Mr. Gallagher first filled out an application for a CMB special event, and paid the fee associated with that. When we realized that there was no CMB available for his event, then he switched and filed the alcohol beverage special event. We took the fee that he filed for the CMB and just applied it to the other application. I think it would require some consultation, if I recall. Mr. Peterson's message to me was that he was not certain what the state's position would be, but it was his belief that this was date-specific, and it was for this date only, and that it could not have an alternate date.
Which I think is correct. You couldn't, in this action, have an alternate date based on the same ordinance, same application. But as I understand the distinction, we are talking about truly authorizing two special events, anticipating that either one or the other will be the actual event.
I don't think there's anything at the state level that would have, prevent Mr. Gallagher from having an event on April 27th and one the following Saturday.
Just one other question. Procedurally, are there any things that need to be done between April 22nd, which is actually our next meeting, and April 27th, the day of his event?
I was going to suggest that if, depending on what staff thinks, and obviously what you all think, is it fair to say that the options would best be left open if the governing body were to consider a, an identical ordinance with the alternative date? Ms. Wicks can assign a number to that ordinance, and you would literally consider both on first reading this evening, and presumably, we can parse this all out in greater, to the greater detail between now and when it would be, either one or both would be up for second reading?
Do we feel like we've had enough advertising based on the agenda for that? Since it wasn't a listed item, is it close enough to make a second ordinance?
Yes, I think so. We're not required to even use an agenda, but if we do, we have to include anything that we know is going to be considered. Given the circumstances here, I would think it would be appropriate, and we do have the second reading, and so I think, I think we're good there. If that's an option staff and the commission wish to consider.
In the, in the four days between the second reading and his event, is enough time for whatever else has to happen?
Well, between first reading and second reading, we'll be able to sort this out. So by second reading, if he wishes and ABC's agreeable, we will have taken enough action to get him in a position to have either date available to him.
Right, but I mean, even if we weren't doing the May date, just the April 27th will be five days after our next meeting.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of reliance that, on first reading, that second reading will follow. They're a little bit at risk that if you, as a governing body, should not approve second reading, then they don't have a lot of time to react, but other than that...
Does that, does that have to then go to the peak, or is there more than 96 hours of pushing paper?
I have met with Mr. Gallagher. I have furnished him a copy of the temporary permit application that needs to go to ABC, and I've encouraged him to go ahead and submit that. And if he has that on file there, then the only thing that he needs to do is furnish them a copy of the approved ordinance that the governing body has approved, and that should allow him to get the issuance of his special event permit.
And we've talked about the timeline with Tyler. I mean, that's how we kind of ended up with tonight, and that next reading between the strategic planning is, I mean, this is as tight as we could get it in a timely enough manner, so.
Okay. Because our original thought was that this was gonna be approved administratively, and you would not see it, but it did not work out that way, so.
You know, the only thing I'd like to see added to this is, is Spielman, this is part of the downtown streetscape. Spielman Plaza's gonna be the first thing that's gonna open up. It's a big deal. I still think we ought to have some type of a ribbon cutting during this, during this time, too, because of, like I said, this is gonna be the first leg of the, of the streetscape being on that end, and it's coming through, and I just would really think that would be appropriate to have a ribbon cutting for the first, first leg of this.
Certainly have that conversation with them and, and make those arrangements.
Mr. Gallagher's, the access to his business is from Spielman Plaza, so he's quite excited to see it completed, so.
Well, I appreciate his, his, what's the word I'm looking for? Patience, because he, getting into Seraphim Bread was difficult for a while there, so I think we need to try to support him as much as we can, and I think this is a great opportunity, so.
He also has secured his plaza rental permit through SDI, so.
Do we need to approve this one, and then we'll, or you giving us another ordinance number?
So we've compared a little bit about whether we need two ordinances, whether we can just add the second date to the first ordinance, and I think it might be easier for you just to amend Ordinance 19-10999 to include April 27th and May 7th? What was the other date? May 4th?
Yeah. And on the basis that they would be described as separate actual events, not alternative dates? dates?
Okay. Get that last part?
What was the first, on April 27th?
27th, yeah.
Did we open it up to...
No, are there any comments from the, we do have a comment from the public. Come on down.
Yeah, Norman, out of Salina, there's a difference where you can serve 3-2 and the higher content of alcohol. This is happening on our lakes right now. I don't drink, but on the boat, I can only drink 3-2, but on the shore, I can drink the higher level of alcohol. Are you guys aware of that?
Yes, that's why we're doing it this way.
Oh, I thought you guys ought to notice. I can drink it here, but I can't drink it there. All right. Go for it.
So, is there review the ordinance a little bit further? I think Section 1 pursuant, could read pursuant to KSA 41-719A subsection 2, KSA 41-2645, in Salina Code Section 524, the governing body approves special events to be held within the special event boundaries on April 27th, 2019, and May 4th, 2019, subject to the issuance of temporary permits for the special events to the applicant by the Alcohol Beverage Control Division of the Kansas Department of Revenue prior to the special events.
Okay, so he's just applying for two permits with the same ordinance, okay. Probably easier, yeah. I thought you had it down.
I thought it, yeah, if you've got it, you go, you go. Okay. I just wasn't seeing anything in there about a specific date in Section 1, am I? Okay, okay.
I'm sorry.
So, we just, in, in Section 1, we just, we just amended to add those two specific separate dates?
To call out those two as separate events with a separate date.
Okay.
Yeah, that was what I offered wording on the first time.
So, withdrawing my offering, make a motion, unless you tell me specifically how it needs to read.
If you'd like me to articulate it, and you can so-move it...
Yes, please.
Okay. I, I would suggest that the first whereas be amended to read that from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM on April 27th, 2019, and 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM on May 4th, 2019, to be held downtown on Spielman Plaza. And then, Section 1 be amended to read that approves special events to be held within the special event boundaries on April 27th, 2019, and May 4th, 2019, subject to the issuance of the temporary permit. And the rest of that section is written.
All right. I would move that we approve ordinance number 19-10999 as presented and amended by Mr. Skreg.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Thank you. Development business, we have none. Is there any other business before our other business? All righty.
Let's try 25 minutes, please.
I move that the city commission recess into executive session for 25 minutes to discuss the subject of legal matters relating to the negotiation of a consent agreement slash final order with EPA relating to land application of biosolids with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 45-7319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at...
5:53?
5:53 PM.
Is it 20 or 25 minutes?
25.
25 minutes.
That would be 6 o'clock.
Five, or 5:50?
Well, assuming it takes...
Okay, I'm going to say 26 minutes, and we'll resume at 6 o'clock, PM.
Okay, second.
Getting a digital clock.
Move in second into recess and recess into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
We don't expect any public action on this item. We do intend to come back and go back into executive session on another topic, and don't expect public action on that one either.